Thomas Claire.
Here.
Adam Marley.
Here.
Maggie Harper. Patricia Lee. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Olinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch here. Eric Kibo.
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum. We're gonna keep moving on with our agenda. First up on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes in our packet from May 4th, 2023. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments? Mr. Bollinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the May 4th, 2023 Planning Board as written.
All right, so we have that motion to accept these minutes from May 4th, 2023 from Mr. Bollinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Marley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then abstentions? There's two of us, Larry. Yep, so, and Mike. So that motion passes. Communications?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the Planning Board. The following correspondences came through after your mailer. Case A 220254, 124 Ridge Road requesting continuance until July 13th. A 230074, 12 Murphy Drive, just a few comments that came up for that particular project. And that actually has been removed, so we can delete that correspondence. That's from Joe Mandola. A 2368, 6966, L Veterans Park. That's an email from Pat Silva to the Planning Board. And that concerns the Tanner redevelopment.
Okay.
124 Ridge Road, an extensive BCM environmental land law correspondence for 124 Ridge Road. A 220254, this is the engineering consultant, Hoyle Tanner and Associates, comments on the DuSet landing, which has been postponed till July. Public comment dated 5/30/23, case A 220254, 124 Ridge Road, concerns over wetland and water flooding issues on Curtis Drive. The expanded lighting plan, so it takes into account all the abutting properties and the light lumens, et cetera, for 124 Ridge Road. We also have a memorandum dated May 25, 2023 from Wayne Husband, Senior Traffic Engineer. And that involves the traffic donation, or not donation, traffic, you know, contribution for the amount of trips that the project will generate. And A 220254 were a few zoning comments related to the DuSet project as well. And that is it.
We actually have one additional one, an email from Attorney Perelman on behalf of Resolution 23123. This is relative to the easement for Penetra Water Works. There was a request to continue to the June 15th meeting.
June 15th?
Yes.
Okay. Any reports from committees or league?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Bollinger.
Yes, the National Regional Planning Commission is in the process of updating their master plan. They did put out a online survey to any city staff or other board members that may have received it. They definitely appreciated your contribution and attention to giving them some feedback. And I'm sure there'll be more details forthcoming as they proceed through that process, so.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting. So this procedure of the meeting and hearings tonight are gonna be as follows. After each legal notice of each conditional special use permit site plan or subdivision is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, a public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview or description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree to the recommended staff stipulations. And the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll next ask for testimony from the audience. I'll first ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. This is your time to come to the microphone, state your name and address for record, express any questions or concerns you may have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. Following the public testimony, the applicant will be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll speak to any concerns raised by the public testimony. After this is completing, completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on any application before us. I'd ask that everybody keeps their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. The board wants to be fair and make the best possible decision based on testimony presented and considering all the applicable approval criteria established in our national revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I can thank everybody for their interest and their attention, and ask if you do have a cell phone at this time, please put it on silent or vibrate or something, okay? Okay, moving on with the agenda. Old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plan, case A 21-0299, this is 145 Temple Street. This won't be heard tonight. It's been tabled till June 15th meeting, 2023. That is the same for old business site plan, A 21-0300, and A 21-0301, all 145 Temple Street. Next up on the agenda, I'm gonna hear new business conditional special use permits. This is case A 23-0074. This is Zhang Holdings LLC owner, Carlos Xavier Torres applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to allow for a barber shop. The property is located at 12 Murphy Drive. So first for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether or not it's complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Bollinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction of new business, case A 23-0074, property located at 12 Murphy Drive.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of A 23-0074 by Mr. Bollinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Do we have somebody from the applicant here to present? Come on up. Yep, just come on up to the microphone, just state your name and address, and then just give an overview of your project or your, in this case, what that conditional use you're trying to.
So my name is Carlos Torres. I live here in Nashua on Lock Street. I'm trying to open a barber studio. It's not really a barber shop. It's just me by myself. I've been a barber for 20-plus years. I've been cutting here in Nashua for a few years now. I do free haircuts to the harbor homes and the homeless men when they're available. And I'm just ready to branch out on my own and do my own thing for my own clients.
Okay. All right. Any questions of the applicant by the board? Not hearing any? Just for staff, this is on the list of conditional uses for the particular location?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and any other questions by the board before I close the hearing? Go ahead, Ms. Hudson.
Just one, one thing, and that's that usually when there's a change of use, it's customary to update your super permit.
Okay.
So we can check to see what the situation with that is. It shouldn't be any issue. You're very low volume and all that, but we like to document what the uses are.
Okay.
So just come to the, if this is approved, come to the engineering department, and we can help you through that.
Thank you very much. Yep. Okay. Anything else you wanted to say in the hearing, or you're all good? I think I'm all good. Okay. All right. Well, I think we're all set for now. Thank you. So at this point, I'd open this up to anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned with the plan. I don't know if there's anybody on Zoom regarding this plan. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Don't see any hands up right now.
No.
All right. One last time for the board. Any questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. Seems like a pretty straightforward use of the particular property. No site plan changes or anything like that. Anybody else have any comments, or?
I guess, just to Mr. Hudson's comments earlier, would that be more of a formality in this case, Mr. Hudson, do you think? Just given there's other commercial uses, you know, within that condo unit?
Yeah, yes, yes, I expect it will be. I mean, they talk about like one toilet and one sink or something like that. I mean, the thing is, when use has changed, typically we want to update those permits, 'cause, I mean, it could have been something different with a lot more usage. Commercial stuff is based upon usage or number of fixtures. Residential is dwelling units based, so. I'm not even, I'm not sure if this is one permit for the whole building, or if each use in the building is a separate permit, which is sometimes the case. So we'll have to review our file, but it, but yeah, whenever there is a change in usage, we like to document that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments during the meeting here? I will go ahead. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Bollinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, case number A 23-0074, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO, Section 190-1406D, subject to no conditions.
All right, so we have that motion to approve A 23-0074 by Mr. Bollinger with no conditions. Do we have a second on that? Second come by Mr. Riley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. All right. Thank you very much. We're all good. Okay, moving on. I'm gonna take things a little bit out of order here on the agenda, well, after the next one. So I'm gonna call out new business subdivision plan, case number A 22-0254. This is Bay Ridge LLC owner, application and acceptance of proposed conservation subdivision, creating 83 detached, single-family condominium units, along with associated site improvements, is located at 124 Ridge Road. For the board, we've had a correspondence, came in today, asking that this, from the applicant, asking that we provide a continuance, or continue this application to the July 13th board prior to making any decisions on jurisdiction. Does anybody want to make a motion regarding that, or talk about it? Mr. Marley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, as long as there's no comments.
Yeah, I actually do have a comment.
Go ahead, make your comments first.
Thank you. Do we need to post a deadline limit for comments again? Because I'm kinda glad this case wasn't heard today, because we got a fairly substantive document drop last night from an attorney representing some of Butters. And quite honestly, I didn't have time to read all 50 pages of it. And I, I don't know how much additional documentation will be required, but they basically have at this point six full weeks to get all the materials in on time, both the applicant and any, any citizens, or via their attorneys that want to state objections or concerns. I'm hoping on July 12th of this year, we don't see a similar situation where everybody turns their homework in at the last minute. Sorry for the snarky little comment there, but it's, it's a little bit frustrating, so.
Yeah, what, I mean, what if we were to propose that the applicant produce any additional materials by June 30th, and then the public have until July 7th to respond? That would hopefully, then we should be able to get the materials by, you know, early the following week and have them at least a few days in advance of the meeting.
And just to clarify my comment, I'm in no way trying to stifle public, you know, interaction with the, with the process, but documentation specifically submitted by professionals, whether they be attorneys or those of the scientific nature, I think the board needs more time to digest those, so 24 hours in advance of the meeting is not sufficient for that type of documentation.
Yeah, I think that's fair, and I mean, we've done that obviously recently with other cases, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on that before I take a motion? All right, well, Mr. Riley, do you want, we'll hear your motion.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make, make a motion with those timelines, but certainly, you know, willing to, you know, amend or, or take other comments if people have different views. So that motion would be to, as to new business, A 22-0254, to continue that case until the July 13th, 2023, meeting of the board. And in doing so, to establish a deadline of Friday, June 30th, 2023, for submission of any additional materials by the applicant. And then to further establish a deadline of Friday, July 7th, for the submission of any response materials from any Butters or other members of the public.
Go ahead, I need. Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Riley with the, for the continuance to the 13th, with the deadlines of 30 June, 30 July, excuse me.
No.
June, sorry.
June, yeah.
Yeah, 30 June for applicant materials, and 7 July for any public comment to be sent in. So I guess I'll ask for a second on that.
A second by Mr. Bollinger.
Any further discussion on this by the board? Mr. Hudson?
Just speaking from a staff perspective, if something was resubmitted, I'm not gonna commit to a one-week turnaround for comments, especially given that there's holiday week in there, holiday weekend. So, so that be what it is, I mean, if you're looking for outside, if this is an outside deadline, that's fine, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll do the best we can to turn stuff around.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're focused primarily on outside, okay?
Yes, that, that was my intent.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes. Okay. All right, now I'm gonna move a little bit off the order that's printed in the agenda. I'm gonna move first to other business, the tentative agenda for proposals of regional impact. Anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether or not we have any proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda? Do we have it in?
Find it here.
We don't have it in the packet. Oh, did I say that? Did you see it? Okay.
Actually, I just found it.
Oh, did you?
A hard copy.
Okay. Any chance to review it?
Oh, I got it here. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact via the Technical Review Committee meeting on May 15th, 2023.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Bollinger. There are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda.
Recording in progress.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Next up, I'm gonna take the referral from the Board of Alderman, a proposed petition for L Deerwood Drive. This is lot H, Sheet 103. Do we have somebody here that's gonna present on that? Come on up.
We may not.
Okay. We might go quicker than we think here. Nobody here on that right now? Who are we expecting?
I would have expected Attorney Mueller to present on this, or the owner of the lot.
We don't have anybody on Zoom?
They're on Zoom, no? Doesn't look like it.
No.
Nope. Okay. All right, well, I will move on to the next item. Go ahead, Ms. Hudson.
Should we move to the table, or are we just taking it up at the next meeting?
Usually these we can just take off, right?
I think that would be fine. I'm happy to give a summary of the request if the board would like that.
I'm fine with that. If you feel like you're capable of presenting it.
Sure.
Yeah.
The gist is per, let me, let me just pull up a report real quick. Okay. So per RSA 67441, this is relative to the issuance of building permits on Class 6 roads. So this portion of Deerwood Drive is an extension of the Class 5 road, but then it takes a right turn to the north, and that portion of Deerwood Drive is a Class 6 road. So the RSA is written in a way where the legislative body, being the Alderman, would have to grant approval to allow the issuance of a building permit for a lot that's served by a Class 6 road. Classics roads are typically not up to city standards, and there's other reasons why there needs to be some additional consideration for the issuance of a building permit. So in accordance with the RSA, the applicant has petitioned the Board of Alderman, and has then been referred to the Planning Board. It will also go to the Infrastructure Committee, where they will hold a public hearing as well. There's a number of stipulations in the RSA, including basically indemnification of the city, no maintenance obligation of the roadway, and the like. And through this process and the review that staff has done, we have received comments, planning provided comments, engineering and fire have provided comments, basically in regards to, to standards of road design. It doesn't have to be paved, but it has to be certain width, height clearance, things like that. And I had provided a memo to the board, basically detailing that, you know, should the board vote in favor of granting a positive recommendation to the Board of Alderman, that the conditions that are outlined in the, in the packet from planning, fire, and engineering, that the, that the applicant and the petitioner would, would have to adhere to those. And as far as we know, they're, they're amenable to that condition.
Questions by the board on, I think we've had this come up a couple of times. This has come up, I think, with like solar installations too.
That could be.
Yeah, so. Mr. Hudson, any comments on this? I mean, you're the one, you deal with building permits all the time. Yeah.
Yeah, only, I mean, I mean, from a planning perspective, it's just a matter of, is this premature and scattered development would be the question.
Right.
I mean, a solar array is one thing, residence is another thing, but I can just speak to the engineering comments briefly. I mean, we, there was a plan, which we, we found inadequate to date anyway to depict, properly depict all the work that would be required
Yep.
to construct a driveway that would meet the fire requirements. So that's, so we have a letter to that effect dated January 10th.
Right.
But yeah, that's, other than that, I don't have, I have much to offer. There is a public hearing scheduled for the end of June, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't know how the board feels. I don't, personally don't feel compelled to move on this without an applicant presentation and/or. And I don't think there's urgency necessarily, because there's a process they gotta go through, but whatever the board's pleasure is.
No, are they coming? Does anybody want, feel like they want to take this up?
Just to clarify, Sam, the Class 6 road, I know you said it's not up to city standards. What, is it, this is a portion of Deerwood Drive that's basically a dirt road? Is that?
Yeah, so Deerwood Drive, the Class 5 section of it, it, you know, traveling westerly, the pavement ends approximately 150 feet before it tees in with an intersection, and the property is on a northern leg of that, of that tee. So the Class 5, difference between Class 6 in this case is just the condition of the roadway, the fact that it's paved, width, and also, you know, vertical clearance beneath brush trees, overhang, things like that. Basically, the fire department wants to guarantee that their apparatus can safely leave the Class 5 section of Deerwood Drive, navigate to the house unencumbered, and serve the property if needed.
Yep. Okay. But those comments to include those requirements in the petition are part of the package.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Based on that, I mean, I don't, if I have any issues. Does anybody else feel like they want to wait, or you want to? We're, again, our role in this is referral, positive, negative comments. We're not approving. This is just a, do we feel like there's any reason not to provide any kind of referral?
Yeah, I guess I don't think so unless, Dan, to your point, I mean, it seems to me as long as we think that, you know, the, the conditions that have been proposed are sufficient, in your view, if they were satisfied, and our recommendation is based on that, I, I would be fine, I think.
All right, so. All right, so we'll make a motion on this? And it would be for referral. Mr. Riley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as to other business, number two, referral from the Board of Alderman, I propose petition for El Deerwood Drive, Lot H, Sheet 103, that the board make a favorable recommendation to the Board of Alderman, inclusive of the conditions that would be imposed as laid out in the staff memo.
Okay, so we have that motion for the positive referral with those staff memo conditions as indicated by Mr. Riley. Do we have a second on it? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I, for one, I'm going to abstain, but I don't, I'm not for against this necessarily, but there hasn't been a public hearing yet, so we haven't heard any testimony or anything. I mean, that's something that will be conducted by the Board of Alderman, but I don't know how, I don't know how we can make a really referral on this when we have no presentation and no, you know, no public hearing of any kind on it. I'm worried it sets a precedent, I mean, a solar farm, I mean, if one comes in and is three miles out of a Classic Road, are we going to approve that? I mean, I don't know where we draw the line. This is the first one I've seen that we've done, I think, that's been residential, where I've only been here three and a half years, but I'm just worried about the precedent if this makes sense. So anyway, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Alderman Tebow?
Yeah, after listening to Mr. Hudson, I'm going to, I'm going to say, I would rather hear from the applicant and I'm probably going to vote no on this one.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Hirsch?
I will, so.
Yep, okay. So do we want, let's just vote on the motion, so. All those in favor of the motion? Again, this motion's for a positive referral at this point, so.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Looks like four against, so that motion doesn't make it. Does somebody want to make another motion regarding delaying or something?
And I would just, yeah, I would just suggest if we're going to make it, if someone's going to make a different motion, we make the motion to table rather than making an unfavorable recommendation if the concern is about, you know, hearing from the party in question.
Yeah. Someone want to put one of those out? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I would just, I mean, I would suggest that we table until the first meeting after the public hearing, which would be July?
Yes, July 13.
July 13.
Well, I mean, we can't table until after the public hearing because we need to provide the recommendation in advance of it, right?
No, does it, isn't, if there's a public hearing, then that, then it goes to the board, full board vote, right?
So the Committee on Infrastructure would be holding the public hearing. I do not know if that meeting is, requires a recommendation from this board in order to even hold that.
I mean, the process that, my understanding is the way the ordinance works is that we get the recommenda, we're providing the recommendation that's to be considered at the hearing. So I just, I guess I want to make sure that we understand what the process is. If we don't need to provide it in advance of the hearing, that's fine, but.
Well, we could just table until we, the next meeting.
Sure.
And request presentation by the applicant. You know, we could do something like that. Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, couldn't the applicant just proceed at their own risk anyway, like any other applicant? I guess I'm not understanding necessarily why this requires city legislative action.
Proceed in what way? Build a house?
No, not build a house, but file a site plan application.
So they, this isn't regulated through site plan because this is a single family dwelling?
But even if, even if this board does not make a positive recommendation, the board, the Board of Alderman could still take it up and vote favorably. I mean, this is effectively non-binding. I don't know how much weight they put on this or don't put on this, but I guess procedurally, I'm trying not to delay somebody, but I personally think there's not enough here necessarily to make a favorable recommendation on. That said, again, the Board of Alderman could certainly take this up on their own and, you know, grant this. So I wouldn't be opposed to continuing to, you know, vote as we did. And if a new resolution is put forth that we can hear prior to, or at the next meeting or prior to whenever they want to come in, then, I'm not trying to overthink this, I'm trying to not put the cart before the horse, so to speak.
So I would just like to note, so in the RSA, review and comment by the Planning Board is required for the local governing body to issue building permits. So by state statute, the board had, the Board of Alderman would not be able to grant a building permit without some sort of recommendation from the Planning Board.
To your point, it can be positive or negative.
That's what I mean, yeah. We have to vote on it, but it doesn't, a negative referral or a non-positive referral doesn't negate the entire process. Like procedurally, it'll still go to the Board of Alderman, they just need a vote from this body.
I'd move to table this to the June 15th meeting to provide the applicant an opportunity to make a presentation. I guess that's my motion, I'll stop there and I'll speak to it after.
All right, so we have that motion to table it to the, essentially the next meeting, June 15th, to give the applicant time for a presentation. Do we have a second on that? Second by Alderman Tebow? Any further discussion? That seems reasonable, that's not delaying very long. Anybody else? Okay. All right, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. All right, so that'll be. Okay, next up, referral from Board of Alderman on proposal ordinance O-23-055. This is amending the zoning map by rezoning land off the Amherst Street corridor from general business to general business with mixed use overlay district, from Park Industrial to Park Industrial with mixed use overlay district, and from highway business to highway business with mixed use overlay district. So.
Mr. Chair, just, are we not taking item three?
Correct, item three, they've already asked to be removed, right?
Yes, we received a continuance request at the 15th.
Yeah, I was, they've already asked that, they're not ready for that. All right, so regarding O-23-055, do we have somebody who wants to?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So a large portion of the Amherst Street corridor is already, you know, an underlying district zoning with an MU mixed use overlay. This is basically zoning the rest of the corridor to have a mixed use overlay. So in a way, it is just to ensure some consistency between, you know, both sides of Amherst Street. You can also say that it's a, it's an opportunity, opens more land up for residential development. I'll note that we, while we haven't really received a lot of interest for, you know, significant multifamily development in this area, it's certainly going to be a consideration when we undertake our comprehensive land use code update. So this could actually give us an indication of the level of interest out there. So I think that's a fair summary of where we are.
And this seems like it's a step towards the master plan.
Oh, yes, this is consistent with.
Yeah, for that corridor.
Correct, yes. The master plan did speak fairly lengthy about the conversion of the Amherst Street corridor to a true mixed use corridor, and I would say that this is in, it is consistent with that vision.
Questions by the board on this ordinance? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Again, this would be for a referral, so this is like a positive referral, if we have any comments or questions or conditions we can put in there. Somebody want to make a motion on this? Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair, yes, as to other business, item four, referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed ordinance O-23-055, that the board make a favorable recommendation.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Riley for O-23-055 for a favorable recommendation. Do we have a second on it? Second by Alderman Tebow? Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay. All right, so going back to our agenda here, so just, next up, this is for the board, we've got sort of four related cases here, A-23-066, O-67, O-68, O-69, are all with respect to properties, you know, around the Mohawk. Mr. Riley, you had something you wanted to say first?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I previously indicated, the chair, I need to recuse myself from hearing decision on these cases, so I will be stepping away, so not participating in these cases.
All right, no problem. All right, so for the board, so it's my understanding, and before we get too much into voting on what's happening here on this, there's a master development agreement that's in the works, I guess this is for staff. That master development agreement is not yet complete. We're anticipating that to be done in the reasonable near future. My sort of strategy with this set of cases would be tonight to, you know, talk to the board, attempt to take jurisdiction, open, have a presentation from, assuming we take jurisdiction, have a presentation from the applicant on these particular subdivision plans and site plan. And then if there are any public here that want to speak tonight, it looks like our timing's pretty good, we probably could take some public comment tonight if there are, if there is any. And then we would be moving to a motion on continuance from that. There would be no voting on the actual merits of any of the cases until the master development agreement is, process is moved on. As far as staff is concerned, that seems like a reasonable approach?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, and I don't see any reason why these can't all be four taken in as a package, unless, anybody else thinks that otherwise? They're all good? Okay. So I'm just going to read them off and then I'm going to take and ask for jurisdiction for the package. So first up, this is new business subdivision plan, case A-23-066, City of Nashua owner, this is Blaylock Holdings LLC, an application and acceptance of proposed subdivision of a portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway as part of the Mohawk Tannery redevelopment project. And again, we're going to take this as a package with case A-23-0067, this is JKS Realty LLC owner, Blaylock Holdings LLC applicant, proposed two lot subdivision, property is located at L Fairmont Street, as well as the subdivision plan, A-23-0068, City of Nashua Fimble Door Corporation, Chester Realty Trust, JKS Realty LLC and LJJ Realty LLC owners, Blaylock Holdings LLC applicant, and it's a proposed consolidation of seven existing lots and subdividing to nine proposed lots with the proposed public road, this property being located at L Fox Street, 66 Fairmont Street, 11 Warsaw Ave, L Intervale Street, L Hughley Street and L Fairmont Street. And then the last application in this sort of package being new business site, A-23-0069, City of Nashua, Fimble Door Corporation, Chester Realty Trust, JKS Realty LLC and LJJ Realty LLC owners, Blaylock Holdings LLC applica, an application and acceptance of proposed Mohawk Tannery redevelopment project involves a remediation and subsequent redevelopment of the former, former Fimble Door Mohawk Tannery sites and portions adjacent properties into a total of 546 multifamily residential units, along with associated site improvements. This property being located at L Fox, 66 Fairmont, 11 Warsaw, L Intervale, L Hughley and L Fairmont Streets. So for the board, I'd ask for this package and when you, I'm going to ask whether or not we believe A-23-066, O-67, O-68 and O-69 have complete applications and are ready for us to take jurisdiction together. Does anybody want to make a motion to that? Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business subdivision plans, A-23-066, A-23-0067 and A-23-0068, as well as accept jurisdiction over new business site plan, case A-23-0069.
Okay, so we have the motion to take jurisdiction of those four applications. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion on the jurisdiction? All those in favor of taking jurisdiction?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so we haven't formally entered jurisdiction at this point, so I guess I'd ask for the applicant to come up and, yeah, you can present it as a package and just kind of explain the pieces and we'll kind of go from there.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner and Bennett, 402 Amherst Street here in Nashua, representing Blaylock Holdings LLC. The applicant, joined tonight by Tom Zajak of Hayner Swanson, the project engineering firm, Bernie Plant of Blaylock Holdings, Michael Devon of Thorndike Development Corporation and Scott Thornton of Vines and Associates. Lloyd Geisinger, who you've seen before from Thorndike and Blaylock, regrets he's unable to attend this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to present this case in its initial stage to the board this evening and also appreciate you taking jurisdiction on four cases so we can describe them most efficiently as once. I'm only going to speak briefly, just to give a little bit of background, then turn it over to Tom Zajak. The board recalls that the underpinnings for this project are the three recent ordinances adopted by the Board of Alderman and the Board of Alderman's approval of the master concept plan for the Mohawk Tannery redevelopment. Before adopting those three ordinances, the board referred them to this board, the Planning Board, for recommendations. You gave favorable recommendations on those three ordinances. We appeared before you on March 9th, a couple months ago, to discuss this proposed development in the context of discussing the ordinances. And at that meeting, Lloyd Geisinger primarily gave a background presentation for context of what the project would entail so that you had a sense of the rationale behind the proposed ordinances. So of course, the Board of Alderman has adopted those three ordinances, has also approved the master concept plan, but as the chair noted, they're still pending the pri, finishing up of a master development agreement, which is a matter we're interacting with, city staff with pretty extensively. That needs to be presented to the Board of Alderman, goes through the Board of Alderman process, and if approved by the Board of Alderman, would set the stage for action by this planning board on the applications. So you're unable to approve if that day comes, this set of applications until and unless the master development agreement is approved, hence the need to defer after tonight's meeting. Just a couple more moments of background, the three ordinances that were approved that set this stage and underpinned the project involved the following, there was some rezoning of the portion of the parkway, about 4.42 acres that's subject to the, tonight's application to RC zoning district, also the Fimble property needed to get rezoned to RC and a couple small parcels as well on the easterly side of the project. The idea was so that all properties in the project would have the same zoning and therefore the same density and core dimensional elements. The second ordinance created the Veterans Memorial Parkway redevelopment overlay district. That sets the governing terms of the district, what an applicant seeking to get approvals for land in the district must go through, sets the stage of the master concept plan and the master development agreement. And thirdly, the actual district itself, this project landmass that you'll see tonight constitutes the overlay district. So every square inch of the, of the project land that you see is in the district and the district is that land, they're one and the same. So when those ordinances got approved, we're then able to make this filing of the three subdivision applications and the site plan application. So we're continuing to work with the city staff on the master development agreement. Also, we need to prep and finalize a purchase and sale agreement for the Also, we need to prep and finalize a purchase and sale agreement for the four point four-two acres of the parkway right of way, so that that can be under control and made part of the development. And there's other steps that we're working with city staff on for ultimate presentation to the Board of Alderman. So those are still in the works. We appreciate the efforts of Matt Sullivan, Mr. Durfee, Mr. Hudson, Tim Cummings, Celia Leonard and others, and all their staff, and working with us to get these stages set, continuing working with us to put together the other elements of the project that underpinned, as I said, and appreciate all your efforts as well in the upcoming time you'll be spending on reviewing this project. I'm gonna turn it over to Tom Zajak, if I may.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Heiner Swanson, three Congress Street here in Nashua. So as Brad mentioned, we're here tonight to introduce, or to further the conversation for the proposed Mohawk Tannery redevelopment project, which is first, the full remediation of the Fimble Door Mohawk Tannery and city portion of the parkway right of way, and then subsequent redevelopment into five hundred and forty-six units of multifamily residential development, along with associated site improvements. As you can imagine, this is a large, complex project with many steps, that certainly relies upon the successful partnership by EPA, New Hampshire DES, the City of Nashua, and our project team. Brad has kinda laid the groundwork in terms of what we've done to date, why we can't push this any further, why we can't ask for approvals tonight, but we really thought it was prudent to come before this board tonight. We've made our application, the project is in the process of being reviewed by city staff, as well as the city peer review consultant, as well as number of those other agencies that I talked about, but we thought it'd be prudent to get before this board, present the application, answer your questions, gain your feedback, as well as any members of the public here tonight, and then we hope to be back before you in due time, later this summer or early fall, hopefully seeking approvals of these subdivision and site plan applications. So I'm just gonna talk briefly about the existing site, kinda get everybody oriented, oriented. I know this board has seen most of this presentation, but again, perhaps some haven't, or members of the public haven't. I'm gonna turn it over to Bernie Plant, talk about the remediation. Michael Devon from Thorndike will talk about the redevelopment and some of the graphics that we have, that will show what the final project will look like, and then I'll come back up to talk a little bit more about the nuts and bolts of the subdivision and site plan applications, before we open it up for questions.
No?
Let's try it.
Just did a test a second ago, and it worked.
It worked, yeah. There you go, there you go.
Okay. All right, so existing site, forty-one acres, we're tilted a little bit due north here, due north is the parkway parcel to the upper left-hand portion of your screen. The site itself is located generally in the central portion geographically of the city, located off of the Veterans Memorial Parkway, of course, was formerly known as the Broad Street Parkway, short distance from Broad Street and Exit Six on the FE Everett Turnpike. We've got about three thousand linear feet of frontage along the Nashua River. As Brad mentioned, the site has been zoned, rezoned RC, as well as the Veterans Memorial Parkway Redevelopment Overlay District, which encompasses the entire site. Butters, direct to Butters, we've got the parkway, the railroad to our north, to the west and south is the Nashua River and the Mine Falls Park. To the east, so working my way north to south, we've got undeveloped land owned by Tamposi entities, a portion of which is subject to one of the subdivision applications tonight. Then of course, we have the Fairmont Heights and Little Florida neighborhoods, along with those various public roads, Fairmont Street, Warsaw Ave, Huey Street, Vilna Ave, and Intervale Street, and then kind of the southwest portion, I'm sorry, southeast portion of our site, we have but city-owned, open space land. So you can see on the slides here, the forty-one acre site is generally comprised of four main components. You've got the four point four acre roughly parkway right of way that the developer is seeking to purchase, to be known as the parkway parcel. There's an approximately five acre parcel that encompass Fimble Door. Then we have a two-thirds acre parcel that we are bringing into this project from the adjacent Tamposi property, and finally, there's a conglomeration of about thirty-one acres that comprise the Mohawk Tannery site, that's made up of two main lots, along with some smaller lots off of Huey Street and Warsaw Ave. In terms of topography, the site contains different sections, some flats, some moderate, some fairly steep slopes. Really, the best way to describe it is, from west to east, Warsaw Ave sits about seventy feet higher than the Nashua River, so it really terraces as you're working your way from west to east down the river. There are some wetlands associated with the site to the interior, there's a small pocket wetland that straddles the Tamposi property to the northeast. The southerly parcel of the, of the site is really inundated with wetlands, that's shown on our plan, and then of course, we have the Nashua River itself, and jurisdictional wetland there is top of bank. The site is encumbered by various floodlines, floodway, hundred-year flood, five-hundred-year flood, those are represented on our plans. Bernie will talk about in a second, the goals of the remediation portion of the project is to get this material contained and up and out of the hundred and five-hundred-year floods. Soils on the site are generally deep core sandy soils, deep depths to groundwater. Utilities, there's some utilities available onsite or in adjacent streets. Really, the main utility of note is there is a City of Nashua Public Sewer Interceptor that runs essentially along our frontage on, on the Nashua River, coming down from the parkway, and runs adjacent to the containment cell and the Nashua River itself, before the interceptor then runs cross-country to the south. So that's really kind of the big notable utility that we have onsite in terms of the existing. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Bernie, discuss past uses of the site, the legacy contamination, and then our proposed remediation efforts.
Okay. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Brad said, and also Tommy, my name is Bernie Plant. I, along with Lloyd Geisinger, who Brad mentioned couldn't make it this evening, are the principals of Blaylock Holdings. Blaylock was formed some years ago, prior to the Veterans Memorial Parkway being built, with the thought that if it was successfully built, that these underutilized properties, heavily contaminated properties may benefit from that construction, and as it turns out, that was the case, the parkway was built. We first approached the EPA about this property back in two thousand thirteen, and have worked diligently since two thousand thirteen to get to the point we are right now. The slide before you is a nineteen seventies photo, aerial photo of the site, and it shows three main, two main buildings, the Tannery Factory Building, where most of the tanning of heights took place, and then to the left of that is the Fimble Door Factory. And to the left of the Fimble Door Factory, what appears to be the Broad Street Parkway or Veterans Memorial Parkway, is in fact that Wilton Railroad line. The city, through the state of New Hampshire, came in and condemned part of the Fimble Door property in order to construct in part the Broad Street Parkway. Fimble Door Factory Building was, was torn down as part of the development of the Broad Street Parkway. Also in this photo are shown three lagoons. The lagoons toward the bottom, closest to the Nashua River, actually, there are two of them there, those were created by the owners of Mohawk Tannery to dispose of tannery waste as their operation proceeded. The third lagoon is located actually on the Fimble Door property, and it's right at the tip of that arrow. Just switch to the next slide. Here we are. This is a nineteen eighty-four photo of the Mohawk Tannery main production building. As you can see, it's fairly derelict, subject to some fires. What happened here is in nineteen eighty-two, New Hampshire DES and EPA came in and effectively shut down the Mohawk Tannery operation because they failed to comply with certain Clean Water Act regulations. Chester Realty Trust, the owner at the time, abandoned the property, and it was subject to numerous fires until two thousand twelve, when the city came in and raised these buildings, and several other buildings, to the west, going down toward the river. The site is still used by homeless, in fact, there was a fire there only about a month ago on one of the former foundation structures, someone had built a, kind of a lean-to TP-type place to live, and that caught a fire, and the fire department was called in to, to put the fire out. So that's been an ongoing issue. The police have done a very good job in the last six or eight months to keep that free of those types of issues. Let's see, the next slide, Scott, yeah?
Try it.
Here we are. This slide shows the areas of tannery waste contamination. The next slide that I'll show you will be of asbestos waste contamination. So there's a combination of both tannery waste and asbestos waste that affects the three properties that Tommy Zajak spoke of. I pointed out in the prior photo, the two large lagoon areas closest to the river, to the east of them going toward Warsaw Avenue, were several satellite areas that contain about eight thousand cubic yards of tannery waste. I think what was happening with Mohawk Tannery, the operators of Mohawk Tannery, is the lagoons got full, and they had to dump the tannery waste someplace, so they dug holes throughout the site and deposited it. So we are knowledgeable about, and have done a substantial amount of testing, I mentioned that we met with the EPA first in two thousand thirteen, to start this process, and between two thousand thirteen and as late as, oh, two months ago, we've been continually testing that property, so we're quite confident in the location of the various contaminants. So what you see there are the two main Mohawk Tannery lagoons, to the upper left is the Fimble Lagoon. What happened here was, the Mohawk Tannery lagoons got full, he went to his neighbor, Mr. Fimble, the Fimble Brothers as it were, and they gave him permission to build a lined landfill on his property, on the Fimble Door property, to accept some of the tannery waste. So we have three major areas, and then those minor areas also. That's the next slide. Outlined in red are the asbestos disposal areas. You'll notice that the city property, which is in the center-left, the piece that we'll be acquiring from the city, has about twenty thousand cubic yards of asbestos waste, that was purposely put there during the construction of the Broad Street Parkway, and that area was acquired to accommodate the disposal of that asbestos, it was legally placed, is a legal, New Hampshire DES licensed asbestos disposal area. To the right of that, on the Fimble property, is illegal asbestos disposal that took place over, over a period of years, it's actually solid waste and asbestos waste. And then the serpentine area that you see at the far right, I'm not too sure how that asbestos got there, but it's gonna be removed. I think we have a total, I'll, I'll get to that in a second. All right, Scott? Thank you. Summarize these numbers for you real quickly, is about ninety-one thousand cubic yards of tannery waste in the lagoons and the satellite areas that I mentioned, is about, of that, about twenty thousand cubic yards exist in the Fimble lined landfill, seven thousand cubic yards in the satellite areas, and there's about twenty-three thousand cubic yards of asbestos-containing material in the three locations that I mentioned. So that's a summary of the waste. All set, yeah?
Keep going.
Please.
Right there.
Back a couple?
Back.
Please.
試 There we go. Birdoc containment, or?
Yeah, back a couple more.
Yeah.
That wasn't, what's missing there is an article the EPA put out in December of two thousand twenty. After a couple of years of negotiations with the EPA, and examining several different ways to remediate the waste in the site, the EPA agreed a CCAM pile system would be most suitable, and have agreed to contribute six million dollars toward the remediation, under certain terms and conditions, not least of which is that we finalized the design. Up to that point, we had, we had arrived at a design, they reviewed it, accepted it, said this is worthy of funding of six million dollars. And I'll make note that this is the first public-private partnership arrangement that the EPA has done in their history, so they're quite proud of that, as are we. The partnership really is between the EPA, New Hampshire DES, the City of Nashua, and the Business Finance Authority up in Concord, National Housing Authority will also be involved. So it involves, and Blaylock Holdings, of course, involves those parties to implement, as Brad and Tommy said, it's, it's a big lift, it's a very complex project. So we're missing a couple of slides here, but I will tell you that the plan is, in terms of remediation, is to consolidate all the tannery waste in one location, in those two existing lagoons that are closest to the river, to take the, the tannery waste that exists in the lined landfill on Fimble, also move it to that location, and we'll subject that lagoon area to a, the construction of a CCAM pile system, which is a series of, in our case, twenty-two-inch concrete and betonite piles that will be drilled around the perimeter of the lagoons, an auger drills down, a void is, twenty-two-inch void is created, that void is filled with either betonite or concrete, depending on which, and you end up encircling the whole tannery area. We end up with about eight hundred and fifty of those CCAM piles. They interlock by the way that they're constructed, so when we're done, we have a, a, you know, a single concrete wall surrounding the lagoons. When the CCAM pile system is complete, a six-foot to about twelve-foot retaining wall, depending on the location, is constructed on top of the CCAM piles. That will allow us the additional area that we need to accept the seven thousand cubic yards of satellite waste and the Fimble Door waste. At that point, certain cover material is put on, it's loaned and ceded, it's vented, and it can be used as public open space. The cast-in-place concrete wall that'll sit on top of the CCAM piles serves two purposes, to accept the additional waste, but also to raise the height of the lagoon areas out of the five-hundred-year flood plain. Right now, part of Lagoon Two is in the hundred-year flood plain, and the fear is, with the frequency of storms that we're getting, the seriousness of storms that we're getting, at some point, that arrow will get flooded, that tannery waste will, will head south toward, toward the center of Nashua. Nashua. So, I think... As to the asbestos waste adjacent to the CCAM pile containment system that we'll install for the tannery waste, adjacent to it to the east, will be a similar containment area for the 25,000 cubic yards of asbestos waste. So when we're all done, that scattered waste, asbestos, tannery waste, ends up being placed in about a two or three acre, about three, three-and-a-half acre area. And you can see it here on this slide. The kind of lighter green permanent containment area is the location where all that material's being consolidated, thereby allowing the most light-green area that was formerly subject to this scattered waste to be clean and to be redeveloped. The area to the, the dock area to the right is about a 14-acre site. That's where that serpentine asbestos area is that will be cleaned up and that 13 acres will be conveyed to the city. They happen to own an adjacent property. That will remain as open space. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Devon. We'll talk about the redevelopment piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Bernie said, my name is Michael Devon.
Can you pull the mic up a little bit?
Sure. Thanks. I'll just hold it.
That's fine.
My name is Michael Devon. I'm a member of Thorne Dyke Development. Thorne Dyke's been developing homes in New England since 1984, so, or 93, 83, I'm sorry, so 40 years. We, we've worked with Bernie on a project in the town of Canton, Massachusetts for multiple years. That site was a contaminated site that's since been redeveloped into a thriving community. We're very fortunate that Bernie asked us to join with him on this project. As you heard from him, there's a litany of challenges that are on this site that presents a public health risk to Nashua, the people that go onto the property and obviously in that floodplain, if a 100-year event happened, it'd go right into the river. But if we do what we're intending to do via the remediation plan that Bernie laid out, the property presents an extraordinary opportunity. This is our vision for the site. As a quick orientation, as Tom and Bernie alluded to, this site sits on the Nashua River. It has roughly three-quarters of an acre, or three-quarters of a mile frontage on that river. It's directly across the river from Mine Falls Park. It sits next to the Fairmont Heights and Little Florida neighborhoods. And if you were to leave the site and travel east on the Verens Memorial Parkway, you would be in downtown Nashua in a matter of minutes. Our plan contemplates 230 apartments, 316 condos, for a total of 546 units, which is within zoning. I'll get into the buildings themselves in a little bit, but we have a layer, a layer of parking at grade as well as four to five stories above that level of parking. Each the, each the apartments and the condos have a pool and a clubhouse. We also contemplate green space to be donated to the city as well as open recreation for residents. In addition, there are a series of public amenities, including a canoe and kayak launch, a river walk, as well as a pedestrian bridge to connect over to Mine Falls Park. Just as the contamination is a problem that all of Nashua shares, we believe that the redevelopment should be a solution that all of Nashua shares. As such, we contemplate a series of access points for the public to gain entry and utilize those public amenities. Two access points that'll be gated are adjacent to the Fairmont Heights and Little Florida neighborhoods. These primarily will be for emergency and city utility access, but they'll serve a dual purpose of allowing pedestrians to walk down, as well as where we contemplate a traffic signal, there'll be an informal crossing over to the Broad Street neighborhoods. Over the next series of slides, you'll see those amenities that I mentioned. It's worth mentioning that this 3D model is very accurate to what we intend to build. As you can see, there is a canoe and kayak launch with public parking as well as a playground for residents of the community, a dog park with agility stations, areas for residents and the public to sit, view the river as well as Mine Falls Park across the way, and open recreation space. What you see is, on this slide, is the river walk with the wall that puts the contamination site, the containment cell, outside of the 500-year event. And where the residents are playing soccer, that's where the containment cell sits. So we intend to utilize this area for passive recreation. And of course, the pedestrian bridge. It's worth noting that this bridge has been on the city's recreation plan since the 1970s. It's absolutely extraordinary that we can incorporate it into this project to connect both our community and the surrounding neighborhoods to Mine Falls Park. And of course, from Mine Falls Park, you can see how all the pieces fit together. Briefly, just want to talk about the architecture. At its core, it's a smart, growth-driven design. We have a series of direct-entry flats. These are individual homes with individual doors. Behind, which you can't see, is a level of parking at grade. Our design is meant to connect the community in a smart streetscape that has a grass strip, street trees, wrought iron fence, plantings, not only so that those direct-entry flats can enjoy it, but the terraces above and the patios can feel connected so that we don't have a series of monolithic buildings, but instead a vibrant community that shares in all the beauty. And bringing it back to the front. So I'm going to turn it back over to Tom to talk about the site plan, which is not on the slide.
Scott, do you mind trying to restart that or...
Yeah. We have a workaround.
You'll notice that all of Michael's slides, who put together the presentation, work perfectly and the rest of ours are having technical glitches. I don't know if that's a coincidence.
Try it again. We've got to work around.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
Take a second here. No, that's not funny. How the heck did that come up? Okay. Let's get rid of that. I just hit one of those shit. Sorry about the advertising. Yep, there you go. I'm sure you guys have the plans in front of you, but...
Yeah.
Again, if there's folks watching at home. Oh, here we go. Which one do we want?
Site plan, set bottom.
Subdivision plan.
Oh, you want the subdivision?
Subdivision first, okay.
Um, which one? The, yeah, that one, down to the, yeah, down.
If you want to just pull up the, that subdivision plan and then the master site plan, I'll just speak to the master plan of both. So I just wanted to provide the board kind of the nuts and bolts of the various applications. So we essentially have three, three land plans that set the table for this. The first of those is the Parkway parcel itself. So ours is a subdivision plan to create that 4.42-acre lot. The Board of Aldermen will also be hopefully taking action related to the discontinuance of that portion of the right-of-way. So there's kind of two pieces to that, Parkway, creation of the Parkway parcel as its own standalone lot. The second application before you is essentially to carve off a two-thirds acre of the adjacent Tamposy property, which is Lot 100, just located to the east. As part of the initial discussions with the city, there was a desire to ramp up the total lot acreage to meet the density requirements for an RC zone. That way, we can stand before you and say, this project as presented meets the underlying density for the RC zone. So that was kind of the genesis of that two-thirds acre and that's the second, that's the second subdivision application and parcel that we're creating for this project. The third and final subdivision plan application is probably the most important one, which is what's up on the screen now, which is essentially the consolidation of those various components that I talked about earlier into that 41-acre lot and then re-subdivision to create the lots needed for this development. So that would be nine new lots as well as the public road right-of-way that you see that runs generally north to south down the middle of the site. So new lots one through seven, those will contain the various elements of the redevelopment, including the building, the roads, the parking. New Lot Eight will be comprised of the proposed containment areas. And then New Lot Nine, which is about 13 or 14 acres, the southerly parcel, as Mr. Plant mentioned, is intended to be conveyed to the city for conservation and passive recreational purposes. So there's nine new lots. The other thing the subdivision plan will do is we'll depict and put on record the various public and private easements that will be needed for this project. Scott, if you want to switch to the site plan? Okay. So once the table is set as it relates to the land plans, then of course, we've got the full redevelopment of the site into this 546-unit multifamily residential project. The site plan that was submitted as part of the application is very, very similar to the master concept plan that was previously before you, that was approved by the Board of Aldermen earlier this year. So I'll piggyback a little bit on what Michael said. I don't have quite the graphics that he's got, but we'll move forward with what we got. So in the front of the site, there's four apartment buildings, Building One through Four totaling 230 units. I'll kind of work my way north-south from the Parkway. Then there'd be five condominium buildings, which are Buildings Five through Nine. Those are more towards the central portion of the site. Those total 316 units, so again, 546 units total. Buildings One through Seven are five-story structures and Buildings Eight and Nine are six-story structures. Each of those nine buildings has ground-floor level parking on the backside and these direct-entry flats on the front side facing the new public road, which will help create that streetscape and kind of break up the facade, the front-side facade on those buildings. Buildings One through Four, which are on the top left-hand portion or northwesterly part of the site, in addition to ground-floor level, they also have underground, a second level of basement-level parking to help supply enough parking in that part of the site. And given the topography of the site, we're able to provide those as you work your way around the building. We also have a clubhouse building as well as two different pool and patio amenity areas on-site. In terms of unit counts, that's located on the plan. We've got a table that provides all that information, but essentially it's two-thirds of two-bedroom units and then about one-third of studio or one-bedroom units is the general mix here. As I mentioned, primary access to the site, very importantly, will be provided via a new signalized intersection that connects onto the Parkway. This access point was contemplated during the original design of the Parkway project. Roadway improvements will also include dedicated turn lanes into the project from both directions. The public spine road is about 1,300 linear feet from the Parkway to its terminus at the end of the site, along with its associated public right-of-way. So as Michael mentioned, the goal really along that spine road is to create, you know, more of a vibrant streetscape with street trees, grass strips, sidewalks, and on-street parking. That's really the entry feature to the project with more parking and kind of the garage entry levels to the, to the rear sides of those buildings as they face that, that spine public road. I do want to mention that since the time of our initial application about six weeks ago, there's been some ongoing discussion with city staff about the possibility of modifying the approach on having a public road and making that a private street. So I just wanted to bring that up to the board as those discussions are ongoing this summer. For me, it's a messy plan change as it relates to the subdivision applications, but really shouldn't be a major issue. Certainly, the development team has already committed to maintaining the road in the utilities, regardless if it's a public or private road. So that'll all be laid out as the development agreement gets finalized, but I did want to let you know that, 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 that piece will still be in flux. My guess is the design will remain the same. Public and private streets require the same design requirements, construction requirements. It's just a little bit of a matter of ownership and right-of-way. I'm simplifying it, of course, but I did want to bring that up. Also important to note the access from the Fairmont Street, or Fairmont Heights in Little Florida neighborhoods. So again, I mentioned, primary access for this site will be via the Parkway. We do have a secondary access point that's located at the end of Fairmont Street near Warsaw Ave. And that was a specific request from the Fire Department to provide emergency access for the site. And it will be gated and it'll be only used for emergency purposes. We also have an additional access point at the end of Intervale. This is a gravel drive or path, so that's going to serve to provide pedestrian access through the project site, again, providing that access from the Little Florida neighborhood, from Intervale Street down to the new public amenities, the river walk and the pedestrian connection to Mine Falls. This road will also serve as a dual purpose to allow the city access to the existing sewer infrastructure, the interceptor and the big siphon structure that's located along the river. At Intervale Street, there'll be a gate that'll be locked. Parking for the site, we have 936 spaces throughout the site. This includes a combination of surface parking spaces, garage spaces, as well as surface spaces that have carports over those. We're about 1.7 spaces per unit across the site. As you know, the regulations call for 1.5 minimum and 1.9 maximum, so we're right there in that sweet spot in terms of providing parking throughout the site. Grading and topography, so it's a challenging site, as I mentioned, due to the grade changes, specifically west, east to west, moving from Warsaw Ave to, to the Nashua River. The main body of the site, as we've designed it, will be fairly level as that street comes down from the Parkway, but the, the main buildings, especially the condominium area, Buildings Five through Nine, that kind of central core of the project, that'll sit about 30 feet lower than Warsaw Ave. So we're going to come off Warsaw Ave with a berm, planted berm, landscape berm and screen fence, and then immediately we slope kind of central core of the project, that'll sit about 30 feet lower than Warsaw Ave. So we're going to come off Warsaw Ave with a berm, uh, planted berm, landscape berm and... And screen fence, and then immediately we slope down and have a retaining wall to make up that 30 feet of grade change. So, uh, m... Much of those five and six-story buildings, you know, will be screened from... From that perspective off of Warsaw Ave. So if you think about the site, it kind of terraces as you move down from... From east to west. We're trying to maintain the existed wooded buffer along that easterly property line as much as I can. As I mentioned, uh, we'll be supplementing the... The, uh, gaps in that, uh, buffer, as well as the areas we're disturbing, uh, with new fencing berms and plantings, uh, where necessary. All of that is spelled out in detail, not only in the Land Use Code, but in the Master Development Agreement and in that Master Concept Plan, their provisions and minimum requirements for those buffer areas. So we'll need to meet... Meet all of those to the letter of the law as we move forward. Utilities are somewhat straightforward. We've got the sewer interceptor onsite, so we'll be providing new connections right into that, as well as protecting that interceptor and siphon as part of the... Both the remediation and redevelopment. Uh, water for the project, we've been working extensively with... With Penachuck. I've considered a... A number of different options. We do need an off-site extension to extend water for fire flows for the site. Uh, currently contemplating, uh, running from, uh, our new intersection on the Parkway, running, uh, westbound on the Parkway to Broad Street and then Broad Street to Blue Hills Ave, where we will connect to, uh, a 24-inch water main. Uh, but of course, still working out the details, uh, with Penachuck. We'll also need to have a booster station onsite, again, to provide the needed fire flows, not only at hydrants, but at the fifth and sixth stories of these, of various buildings. So, working with, uh... Working with Penachuck, working with, uh, the Fire Marshal on all those... All those pieces. Uh, of course, drainage, gas, electric, tell data, standard, all underground for... For a project like this. So, overall, the project's going to disturb about a 28-acre footprint of that 41-acre site. Most of that is in the northerly and central part of the site. That southerly parcel is really, we're going to remain untouched, aside from that asbestos removal that... That Bernie talked about. So of that 28 acres, that'll be disturbed. 22 will be part of the remedi... Uh, remediation effort. So by the time we get to the redevelopment, much of the site is already going to have been, uh, disturbed. Project percent... Uh, provides 65% open space, where a minimum of 35% is required by RC zone. Uh, as part of the, uh, overlay ordinance and master concept plan, there's also a green space requirement, uh, which is somewhat unique, but is defined in that, uh, ordinance and in the master concept plan. It's essentially contiguous usable open space as opposed to counting every little grass strip that may not be contiguous. So this includes some of the park areas and... Certainly the... The southerly parcel where, uh, passive recreation can take place. So we're providing 55% green space, uh, where that ordinance calls for a minimum of 50%. Talk a little bit about wetland... Uh, wetland buffers and Conservation Commission. So in total, the project will impact, uh, about 6,600 square feet of wetland, along with about 25,000 square feet of buffer area. Those are all depicted on the site plan. These are mostly located along the perimeters of the site and, uh, all of the wetland impact and the majority of the buffer impact is related to the remediation, uh, of the project. Uh, it's also important to note that the site is now located within the city of Nashua, urbanized, shoreline exemption area. Therefore, there are certain local and state buffers, such as the DES Shoreland, uh, Protection Buffer, uh, that does not apply to the site proper. Uh, last month, we, uh, appeared before the Conservation Commission, uh, held a site walk with the CONCOM. We're scheduled to appear, uh, before them next week and will certainly be, um, seeking their favorable recommendation for the wetland and wetland buffers associated with the project. Uh, talk a little bit about stormwater. Uh, important to any project, uh, especially so here, given the remediation and our site's close proximity to the river. Stormwater is... Is really boiled down to quality and quantity. And on this project, it... It should also be viewed through the lens of the overall project goals and improvements as it relates to, you know, the remediation itself and the contaminants that are being removed and contained from the site. So of course, there's no formal treatment practices that are onsite now. Generally, the runoff, uh, flows in a westerly direction from, you know, Warsaw Ave and easterly portions of the site down towards the river, given the grade change. There is a small portion of the site in the northeast corner that drains to that Tamposy property to the northwest. Uh, additionally, um, there are existing Parkway basins located within that Parkway parcel that were installed as part of the... Of the Parkway project. They, uh, accommodate about a six-acre watershed, uh, associated with this piece of the Parkway. So, uh, our plans and, uh, stormwater study represent, uh, certainly a robust onsite drainage and... And stormwater management system, uh, that provides both qualitative treatment and, uh, quantitative attenuation of runoff. There's a total of six, uh, stormwater management practices proposed throughout the site. Five of those are underground, uh, systems that are located within parking areas, and there is a... A surface basin that is located to the south or rear of Building Seven, which is the one at the end of the public road. Um, system will accommodate runoff, uh, not only from the proposed redevelopment, building, roadway, parking areas, but also from that six-acre watershed from the Parkway. We are taking over that water and accommodating it into our... Our, uh... Our design and our... Our system. Those basins would then be eliminated as part of the project. They're really located where those first two buildings are, up... Up along the Parkway. We do have, uh, two new drainage outlets, uh, to the river that are part of the system and... And design, many of these underground systems are designed to fully store and infiltrate large storm events from their contributing watersheds. Uh, post-remediation, we're looking to take advantage of the sandy soils and favorable infiltration conditions, uh, that exist onsite. So overall, stormwater management system will provide treatment and in these large storm events, we'll convey that runoff in a safe and controlled manner to the river as to not worsen downstream flooding conditions. There's many times on projects where you can have a treatment practice that holds back water too long and releases it at the same time that the river is cresting. So typically, uh, you want to make sure you're treating your water and controlling it, uh, controlled discharge to the river, uh, before that peak of the river, uh, you know, rises up. Uh, our study and our plans are obviously underway, uh, in terms of review by, uh, city staff, the city's peer review consultant, as well as, uh, New Hampshire DES and EPA. We will need an AOT permit on this project as well, which has been submitted. Uh, Michael talked a little bit about the public benefits, pedestrian improvements. I'll relist some of those now. So first and foremost, remediation and cleanup of this legacy contamination onsite. The danger that exists of having these open lagoons within the hundred-year floodplain down by the river, uh, is... Is first and foremost. Donation of the 13-acre southerly parcel to the city for conservation and passive recreation. We've got public parking in a trailhead, which provides access to the Riverwalk, uh, as well as a canoe and kayak... Kayak launch, uh, pedestrian connections to the adjacent neighborhoods, uh, Intervale, Fairmont, and if you saw his graphic, we are going to pursue a connection across, uh, the intersection, across the railroad, uh, to Broadview and some of those neighborhoods, uh, that, uh, front off of Broad Street to our north. So trying to provide pedestrian connections, uh, for those folks to get to the pedestrian bridge. Uh, I think in Nashua, it's divided into four quadrants with, you know, the highway, uh, dividing things east-west, the, uh, river dividing things, uh, north-south. Um, I believe that this northeast portion of the city is the only quadrant of the city without direct access, uh, to Mine Falls Park. So I think this is a great, uh, public benefit that would be constructed as part of this project. Um, so in summary, Mr. Chair, again, as I mentioned, large, complex project that, uh, relies upon a successful partnership by all groups involved. We're here tonight seeking the board and public's input. Uh, we're going to continue working with staff and review agencies a... As we move through the summer. Ultimately, we... We hope to be returning, uh, before you in short order, seeking approval of these applications. And with your support, uh, the proposed remediate... Uh, remediation effort, uh, could possibly commence later this year, take approximately 18 months to complete. So we're talking about late fall, early winter of this year, possibly spring 2025 for completion. This includes a remediation, the remediation effort itself, as well as a period of monitoring by DES and EPA before they sign off, before any shovel can go into the ground on the redevelopment effort. Uh, so, in terms of, once that sign-off happens, construction of the... Of the redevelopment portion of the project will be commenced in a phased manner, and, uh, we're estimating taking approximately five years, uh, to complete. So here we are in summer of 2023. We're talking about potential completion of this project in fall of... Of 2030. So, long way to go. Lot can change in terms of market conditions, but, um, like we said, this is one of many steps and... And, uh, we look forward to answering any questions, uh, receiving your feedback tonight and, uh, myself or anybody else in the project team would be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So I just have a couple of quick questions and, uh, kind of go around the board here for folks. Just with respect to sort of the, I'll call it the east-west kind of road that's crossing over, it looks like it's being set up for future connection. I guess that's the current Tamposy site to the right, right there on the... On... On the map there. So is there... What's the design concept there that if that site's developed, it could also access through off of the Broadway, off of the Parkway through the site? Or is it just kind of, would there be like a potential for a natural sort of easterly expansion of the overall concept?
Correct, yeah. Um, so as far as I understand it, there's only one access point provided to the Parkway and that's what we're proposing here. So as part of this, the discussions with the city, uh, a part of the deal here is that this project would provide, uh, both formal access and utilities for, uh, let's call it the... The Tamposy entities. There's a number of parcels that extend a... Along the Parkway, uh, from, uh, our site over to Baldwin Street. Um, so it... It is contemplated as part of these plans. There are, um, certainly, uh, Blaylock has, uh... Has a deal with Tamposy to, at a minimum, purchase the two-thirds acre that I talked about. There's also some grading and drainage easements associated with the Tannery project that are represented on those plans. There's also that formal, uh, easement and utility still for that location. So, a long-winded way of saying, yes, we do anticipate that any future development of that site would, uh... Would gain access and utilities through this... This project and ultimately the signalized intersection.
Right. So the roadway design, the new one, is... Is... Is being designed to accommodate that?
Correct.
You know, in the future.
Correct.
And then the connection to the Fairmont side, again, that's sort of off of that east-west roadway, but that's... That's... That's something that the Fire Department wants, just for emergency?
Yes, yeah. The Fire Department, when we met with them very early on on this project, it must have been last summer, um, you know, we met with them about potential access points. Certainly, they're aware of the topography there, uh, which is a challenge. And they kind of gave us their ranked list of, uh, how they would... Would like to come to the site. And, uh, the preferred method would be, um, to that access point, secondary access point off Fairmont Street, you know, from their Amherst Street Fire Station. So, um, I understand that there's been, um, newer siren-induced gates that have been implemented as part of the recent school projects here in Nashua that all parties seem to be fairly, uh, excited about, and so that's what we would envision there. But, uh, again, secondary access only, and that was requested by the Fire Department to come off of Fairmont Street, as opposed to coming in... In... Through the Parkway.
Yeah, okay. And it made sense to come all the way down from that sort of east-west connector versus just off one of the parking areas or something?
So there's that grade change there. So you're seeing things in 2D, but I'm going from elevation 190 to 160, so I need some length of road to come down at, uh... They are coming down, which is good.
Yeah.
But you got to provide, you know, a certain, uh, you know, slope to that road, and so that's why it kind of, uh, turns north and connects in that location.
Okay. And then the... The sort of parceling of, you know, the subdivision, that's meant to be consistent with, uh, building areas? That's the idea there? There's a lot of parcels, like nine, you know, and the reason there's nine?
Sure.
Why?
So I think it's to set it up for financing purposes, essentially.
So you can do phases of...
So the... If you look, if you're getting, if you work your way north-south, those first four buildings are apartment buildings, so those first two lots, there's two apartment buildings per lot, plus the clubhouse. And then as you work your way to the condominium buildings, their owner occupied, each of those will sit on its own lot.
Yeah.
Um, there'll be, you know, master homeowners agreements that'll govern all of this in terms of maintenance and very typical, uh, and then the containment cell itself will sit on its own lot. A... And then the southerly parcel that's to be conveyed to the city Lot Nine, that will be the ninth lot, so.
Okay.
Kind of seven buildable lots.
Yeah.
But that's why it's being set up.
Okay. Yeah, I get it, just for public reason, like, why is there nine kind of thing, you know, so. Okay, uh, other questions by the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Just a... A simple, I think, administrative question for Mr. Hudson. If... If that... If it is in fact constructed as a... As a private road instead of a public, would the city be responsible for maintaining the signal? Uh, obviously Veterans Memorial Parkway is public, but if that signal is installed primarily to benefit a private entity, does... Are you... Are you guys going to get the call at 3:00 in the morning when it goes to flash, or is that something that the... The property owner would be responsible for?
Uh, that's an excellent question. We hadn't discussed that. It's only... Only as of recent that we've had discussion about being a private road. We'd contemplated a public road, but full maintenance by them. But it's just cleanest if it's just a private road. Um, so no, we'll have to... We'll have to discuss that, you know, in our discussions about, uh, you know, who's... Who's doing what, uh, both short-term and long-term, uh, in that MDA agreement probably or later in the planning board discussions.
Very good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Just one more quick one, Mr. Chair. Um, I think this might be, again, more of, uh, the administrative nature. I... I imagine that we're... We're going to, uh, either table or continue this matter. Um, does... Does that need to be to a date certain, or do we have to... Can we leave it open based on when the resolution is?
It needs to be a date certain.
A date's...
Yeah, it'd be a date. We can talk about what date that next one.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just quick, the phasing of this, the master development agreement is going to address the phasing.
Correct, in detail.
Yeah, because I... I could envision, you know, speaking on behalf of the city, we want some of the amenities early, right? Not at the end kind of thing, right? So... So, but I... That's the... That's the vehicle for the...
Correct.
The agreements between the phasing is that master development agreement. Okay. Mr. Peterson?
I have a question. Earlier, your associate mentioned, uh, they're going to use, uh, a containment wall and all these interlocking pieces to contain the waste. What is there to prevent the waste from seeping under that wall and going where you don't want it to go?
Um, I... I can ask Mr. Plant to come up. My understanding of that is... Is a... Was a pretty good graphic there that showed that the CCAMP wall, you know, construction being built, but essentially those CCAMP walls are going down to either till or, uh, bedrock. So, um, my understanding is anything seeping under would be, uh, minimal or negligible.
So if you hit the bedrock, uh, the poison won't be able to go under the wall, hopefully? That's the plan?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay. Yeah, I don't have too many more at this point. I think we're obviously going to have more discussions as we move forward, but I would like to get an opportunity for any public, um...
Sure.
Comment here while we have a few folks here, if there are, is any, just so we can capture some of it, so. Uh, at this time, I guess I'll open up to the public. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or just have a question on the plan? Go ahead and come forward.
I do.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Yep.
My name is Denise Musioli. I live at 611 Midruss Row.
I live at 611 Midruss Road, and I just wanted to thank the gentleman for a very excellent presentation and answered a lot of my questions. The concerns that I have are, well, one question that I have is who's going to be paying for the bridge? Is that the, is the city funding that, or is that coming from the developers?
Okay, well, they're listening, they'll respond.
Okay. And I was curious about the dog park. Is that going to be a public amenity, or is that strictly for the residents? That's number two question.
Okay.
And is, is a lot of the area going to be fenced in? Because there are a lot of wildlife still left in that area, and I'm just thinking about, you know, wildlife, you know, coming through and moving over towards Merrimack. If there's going to be a lot of fences, they can get caught in, things like that. Lastly, I know that they're working very closely with the EPA and the Conservation Commission, that, you know, they're hoping to get a favorable ruling from them. I would just ask that down the road, you know, a few years down the road when, you know, the projects all been finished and all that, I don't know how long it's going to take, maybe five years, but that they just continue being responsible, because they're so close to the river that things like rock salt, pesticides, I've lived in condos all my life, and I can know that there's a lot of pesticides, lawn treatments, trash, things like that, that those are responsibly contained, and it doesn't seep into the Nashua River that took us forever to clean up. That would be my only, only ask of them. And I wanted, again, just to thank them. It looks like they put a lot of thought into it and are taking the right steps to get the project approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any public, either for or against? Come on up, yep.
Hi, I'm Sandy Belknap. I live at 40 Fairmount Street here in Nashua. I used to be a member of this board back in 29 to 2012, so I appreciate everything that you're doing here tonight, and I'm here because I understand how important it is for you to also hear what the citizens have to say about plans like this. Just a little bit of background, I've been involved with this project for 25 years as of this year. I sent a note to the EPA back in 1998 after seeing the movie A Civil Action, and it sparked some activity. It took a year, you know, email back in 1998, took forever to get information back, but the EPA got involved. So we've gone for years working on this, different mayors, from Mayor Streeter and Mayor Lozo, so we've been making slow, steady progress. As Bernie said, Bernie Plant said back in 2013, he came forward with a plan that we could actually start to get behind and look at. Here we are 10 years later, and I was really excited on, a couple of weeks ago, in the middle of May, when I saw the signs at the site that there's something happening, and this meeting was happening tonight. So from a citizen point of view, while we've had so many meetings as a neighborhood, going back to when Gene Shaheen was our governor and Bob Smith was our senator until what we have now, we have the city, like, onboard, economic development is doing a really good job, working with Bernie Plant and his team, the EPA, New Hampshire DES, our state senators, our state reps, everybody's coming together on this. So I just wanted to make that clear to the planning board that, and to the developers that are here, that to, don't forget that the citizens are the ones that are, could really make or break this project. Now, when it comes to the different subdivisions that are happening with this plan, the very important aspect of any approval down the road is that a big stopgap on this will be any traffic coming down Fairmount to access the site, other than fire department. We understand that's the fire department, but if something's not approved with that right away off of the Veterans Parkway, and there's a plan that comes up that says it's going to go down Fairmount, you're going to have a lot of people standing here at this board fighting against that, and Bernie and his team know that. So that's all, I just wanted to give that feedback, let you all know, this is on the radars of our whole neighborhood. Everybody can't make it to all of the meetings, but we know when they are starting to come up. Bernie and his team are keeping us in the loop. So it's this nice collaboration, and I think that to keep asking the questions that you're asking now and asking for the public's input continually is going to be important, because, you know, that's a beautiful parcel of land. You saw from what they were showing, we're excited to access the amenities that we can when they're available. I've lived in that neighborhood, oh gosh, it was my grandparents' house, so I used to visit it when I was a child, and now I own the property, and I'm so excited to actually go behind those gates one day legally, I'll sometimes sneak back to see what's going on, but to walk back there legally, and I've only been back there my whole life, like, less than five times, but to walk down to the boat launch and to walk around the riverfront Parkway and all of that. So, you know, just putting that out there, that there's a lot of background and history, that people have been angry about this project, and I think we finally have the community and our neighborhoods starting to turn around and say, this is finally right, that we're cleaning up this site, we're going to control the waste, and leave something better for the people that are coming after us living in this neighborhood. So that's my feedback. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Okay. Just because I know we're kind of moving towards a continuance, but I wouldn't, I'm definitely going to give more probably public rebuttal time, but, you know, we do have a couple of quick questions, and just because there might be a gap here if you want to address a couple of the questions, that might be helpful for people's memory, you know?
Absolutely. Again, for the record, Tom Zajak with Hainer Swanson. So in terms of paying for the bridge, you know, that's certainly a component of the master development agreement and ongoing discussions. My understanding is that will be funded by the city, but built by the developer, and there'll be specific milestones in that master development agreement as to when that bridge will be built as it relates to the other bill, you know, the buildings, the buildings coming online, so.
Yeah.
You should have that, when you get the master development agreement to review, that should be spelled out in there in detail, but will be publicly funded and developer-built. The dog park, as we showed, so there's a couple passive recreational areas in the green space on top of the containment area or around it. One of them is a dog park that will be private in that it will be available for use by the residents as opposed to the general public. There's also a playground there, same thing, so. The public amenities will include parking access, canoe-kayak launch, the Riverwalk along the river, and then direct access to the pedestrian bridge. So there is a little bit of a, you know, public and private amenities that are right there around each other. The question of fencing, so really, the only area that's getting fenced is in and around the containment itself, and it's less so about keeping people out, it's more so about the change of grade. Bernie described, there's a six-to-10-foot wall that's being built on top of the CCAMP wall, so when you walk along that Riverwalk, north-south along the river, you'll see the river on your right, and you'll see a six-foot wall on your left with a fence on top. So I think the concern was more related to wildlife, and so I don't think that fencing for fall protection is really going to have an impact on habitat and species movement in the area. We're certainly not installing a fence along the whole southerly side of the site, something that would block critters from moving. The last question was about kind of winter maintenance, lawn maintenance. I don't believe that's something that's spelled out in the master development agreement, that's a common item for homeowners association or condominium documents to address.
Okay, great, appreciate it. So any other questions by the board here that you want to get in this part of the hearing? Okay?
I was just going to make one comment about the date. You asked about the date. I think September 7th is that first meeting in September.
Yes.
Is probably the preferred date on our side that is reasonable. I know there's no second meeting in August.
Correct.
So we do expect that, the next wave of the Board of Alderman actions legislation, including the master development agreement, will take some time here over the next couple of months, and we'll piggyback that time with making progress with, you know, review comments on the application, state permits, all that kind of stuff, so. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, I'm in the hearing, just procedurally with regard to the master development agreement, is that coming, do we figure out is that coming before the board, is that something we're going to see before we?
I can't recall, to be honest.
Yeah. I don't think we noticed the answer to that.
Brad will tell you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Again, for the record, Brad Westgate, the goal is to get before the end of June, draft master development agreement pulled together between us and staff.
Right.
June 20 is what we hope for, so it can then be submitted to the Board of Alderman. The Board of Alderman will refer it out. I suspect one of the referrals will be to this board.
Okay, so like a typical referral?
Correct, and certainly would be before September 7.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just for the board, so they?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Anything else the applicant wanted presented in this particular meeting? All right, so for the board at this point, I think the next motion or action that we should take is a, is a, is it be a continuance? It would be a continuance.
Yes.
So a continuance of the applicant, again, it's the four applications, I think we can take them in one motion, we just have to spell out the actual case numbers, and it would be to the 7th of September. Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to continue the following cases until the September 7, 2023 Nashua City Planning Board. The cases are as follows, Case 823-0066, Case 823-0067, Case 823-0068, and Case 823-0069.
Okay, so we have that motion to continue those four cases until the September 7, 2023 meeting. By Mr. Ballinger, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. Thank you very much, appreciate it. That concludes, because we did the other business ahead of time, anybody have any discussion items I want to bring up? Hearing none, I will go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn, everybody?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
So we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Ballinger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, we are adjourned at 9:08. All right.